It's seven oh six, so we want to get started with our our meeting tonight because we have a special guest that we invite every single year. And it's called Budget Review. And we welcome Budget Review. And so we're just going to go ahead and move on to review the budget and then we'll review our agenda for tomorrow.
Okay, Rick, if you could, could I share a screen or do I have share a screen? Maybe I haven't. I do. Okay, let's see if I can make this work. All right, one of the big things that is always kind of fun is to recap where we were for the year. I'll kind of go through this in a hurry so that we don't have to spend all night, but everyone can see the, and these are all in your book, so you can look at them on your leisure time. If you don't see them on the screen here, is everyone see this on the screen?
Yep.
Okay, so I called the twenty twenty-two a year of achievement because we accomplished a lot of things. We continued to work with the, through the pandemic as we still provided masks and hand sanitizer and various information about that process. And I heard on the news the other night that now if you've been vaccinated prior to September, you need to get another vaccination. So but I know they're closing the one in Heightsville down in May. Our food giveaway continues to grow and prosper with Victory Grace. They, the lineup is long. The walk-ups are long, and so it's a great program. The Waterman Project took a break for winter, but they'll be back in full steam and it completes in the spring of twenty twenty-four, so they'll be working on this side of the bridge this year and primarily on Decatur Street, fifty-second, that area. So look out. Our Edmiston Beautiful Program is in its sixth year. We've received over three hundred thousand dollars grant funds to assist twenty-seven homeowners with this program. That's a before and after picture of one of the homes on Emerson Street. Was a major difference. We brought aboard a wonderful person with Asha and in your, front of your notebook is her updated report on all the wonderful things that she's accomplished with social media and the number increases in terms of people on Twitter, on Facebook, on Instagram, and all the different platforms. So just doing a really outstanding job. We started out the year last year with the Black History Virtual Event, and as you know, I think we're getting to become, our team is becoming really experts at this. Rick, Avery, Lindsay, and this year Asha joined the group, Mary Gant, Mr. Johnson, council member, Betsy, everybody got in the act and it was, uh, this year's was outstanding, but the one last year was great too, so always glad with that. We started down the road with the tree inventory, got it completed. We have it available on Arbor Scope and we updated as we deal with trees and their trim fertilized or eliminated. Avery connected us up with Greater Riverdale Thrives, got us involved with that organization and helped sponsor a soccer event during spring break at the Rec Center. We had our caravan and Mr. Johnson, are you, are you wanting to be the bunny this year? We're not caravanning. We're just doing pictures here at Town Hall, so maybe you would like to do that?
Yeah, I'd be willing.
Okay, great, great. We appreciate that. We're having crafts and pictures here at Town Hall for the Spring Festival, so should be fun. We were named a Tree City USA for the eighth year. We applied for a growth award this year, so we haven't heard back on that yet, but we're hopefully keeping our fingers crossed. We planted over a hundred and seventy-five trees last year. That's pretty amazing for our town, so lots of great partners with that. We created the tree board. How we haven't got them active yet. We're still pointing people and getting them going. We have that available now to help assist us. We cleaned up the town. We filled nine thirty-yard dumpsters with the two events that we had had, so it's a very popular event and, and they fill up really quickly. We did, we participated with County Executive Angela Alsobrooks, Growing Green with Pride, twice, and we planted trees, picked up trash and did bushes and so it's twenty-six trees and five hundred tulip bulbs were planted and three hundred pounds of trash. We cleaned up the river. Avery led the team this year on that. We got about our normal twenty-five bags of trash. We held a pop, 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 pop tillow, Mexican art with Operation Arts. We, our Operation Arts partnership is outstanding. We, we appreciate China Renee and Daniel on a great deals. They come up with great ideas. I think the mayor is doing some of that work there, but anyways, a popular event in the park. We brought in two new staff members this, this past year. Anna and Daria both joined us and both doing, Anna started as part-time but moved to full-time in August. We had a plant swap over by Eco City Farms and a plant tour, and it turned out to be a fun day for that. Because of an organization called CAMC here in the county, they connected with the mayor and the mayor is involved with that, and so she was able to get us a fifteen hundred dollar scholarship for one of our residents, Daniel Akeen Cutie, I mean David, I'm sorry, and he got selected and then they honored our, the mayors in the twenty-six communities at a luncheon, and there's a picture of the mayor being, she was also a taskmaster. She was assigned a task to sign to the mayors. We won our plant award. Again, we got it that from the state of Maryland for the work we do with trees. Chief Bill retooled, well, actually it wasn't Chief Bill, but yeah, it was Chief Bill that actually retooled the police cars and, and made them look good. We had a bike to work as we host every year, as we're hosting again this year. Our bike patrol was created. I'm not sure how much they've been out patrolling, but we have it set up and ready to go. We honored our men with the rain of the reed banally at the Veterans Park. We appreciated our teachers with a luncheon for them during their time when they didn't have food. Mary Gant and Avery there, Ms. Cooper. We congratulated our graduates with the graduation caravan. This year, we're going to do the graduates a little bit different. We're going to honor and identify them at Edmiston Day on the stage, so not doing a caravan. We cleaned up at Sunoco. Mr. Johnson led that charge and I'm sure it probably needs it again. It's called Clean Sweep.
Yeah.
It does need it again, Mr. Johnson?
It definitely does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We host people from time to time here in the community. Miss, Mayor Gant hosted Mr. Nice Ross. She's the liaison to County Executive Angela Alsobrooks' office for the communities. She came out and spent some time with the mayor. And then we hosted the Chesapeake Bay Trust staff as they toured and learned about our environmental efforts. We recognized businesses for their landscaping efforts. And we worked on our economic development strategic plan. It is in the final stages. As once we should have it, I would hope next month. We installed our new digital sign and our new lighted sign. They are amazing, both of them. We restored the plumber mural. It's beautiful and will stay beautiful, I think, in the location that we've chosen is it's a little protected from the weather. We tried some walk and talks. I don't know that they were real successful, but we did cover the town a couple of times and have some fun doing that, so we expanded our beautification efforts with some wonderful planters and gardens. One is in Veterans Park, one is you enter the town, and then over on Buchanan Street was a grant to beautify that area. We did have a climate change hit Edmiston and you all actually responded with the program and that program is up in the corner there. To date, we've had four applications. Let's see, one, two, three applications, two inquiries, and so it'll go out in the newsletter again next week, and so it's, the flyer's gone door to door. And so we have had some questions, and so hopefully that program will start picking up.
Got to wait, girl. You got to wait.
Um, our bus shelter is really popular. I, makes me smile every time I go by there and there's people sitting in it and enjoying it, so it's really a beautiful addition to the entrance of town there where that old redwood sign used to be. We won our Golden Trawl Award for our Veterans Park beautification. But you get it after the fifth year, and so we're really pleased. This year, we're entering Town Hall for that particular award. Our community garden won a national award for best community garden in twenty twenty-two, and Mr. Johnson continues to work with residences. We've already got folks coming back and ready to go for this year. We celebrated Yard of the Month, had some new winners in different parts of the, of the community, and they always get excited with the fire. We redesigned our sustainability resource website, so if you go to our website, you can find out all kinds of wonderful things about our sustainability efforts. This was an effort by Bethany and a student from the University of Maryland through the Finance Center, and so it's excellent. And now Asha manages it. We did the plan identification program here at Town Hall. If you click on the QR code that's with the, by the little plant, it'll tell you all about that particular plant and and what, where it can be planted and all those good things, and so it's been a good program. Our advisors came for America Bloom. This year, I've heard wind that they're going to be here in July, which that should be interesting since it's so hot. But I don't have dates yet, so they did, did touring. We improved our parking lot. It's so wonderful. The drainage is good, the the parking bumps are good. Everything looks great. We hosted our summer interns, Jamie and, and Helen were just terrific students that always help us with many different projects. We updated the police fleet with a new car. The mayor held business meetings over on Buchanan multiple times and went over on Forty-Sixth Avenue. And so I heard lots of comments about different things going on in that area. Our little libraries went through an artistic makeover. Absolutely beautiful. We have two more coming in May. One is Star Trek themed and one is this, oh, Harry Potter. Eco City Farms added a new mural and a lady in town did that, so we're going to reach out to that particular artist. She lives over on Gallatin, or on Hamilton Street and, and see if she'd be interested in doing a Hispanic mural for us. We participated fully in Maryland Municipal League as we're a banner city again. Hillary picked up our certified Maryland Award. We are certified again for three more years, and then Mayor and Mr. Johnson attended league conference and had fun at the red carpet event. We built a zen garden. Bethany wrote a grant and brought all of her Chesapeake Corps members to town and they, they built the zen garden and then worked on the garden down at Eco City Farms and had fun doing that. We celebrated National Night Out with hot dogs, not kosher hot dogs, but hot dogs. But it was a fun event. We had, we did say goodbye to Bethany. We have applied again for a Chesapeake Corps member and Avery and Asha and I will do our best to market the town to try to get one to select us, and we'll do that in April, so keep our fingers crossed that in come August, we'll have a new, new CCC member. Asha and Avery and, and Bethany came up with the treasure hunt in town. If you haven't done the treasure hunt, you should. It's online and you can go out and get to know the town. The kids did it last summer for book bags and school supplies and it was a great, great program, great success. It ended up, when the heat came, we had to convert to the, to the website, but prior to that, you could go out all over town and, and find the treasures. We had a movie in the park again, and we got one scheduled again for this summer. These are our, three of our biggest volunteers for student volunteers. They have such Genesis, Pedro and Moses. They have such a great time helping us. And there's Hillary picking up our Sustainable Maryland Certification Award. We learned to salsa. I love that picture of the team learning the salsa and the instructor, and it was a great event, and we're already planning some improvements to it this year. We grew the Unity Rally. It was our biggest yet and certainly our most successful and really got the message out to folks and families about gun violence, about mental health and awareness and really, really Avery and the team just did an amazing job getting vendors, our fire trucks coming back for Edmiston Day and and so it'll be fun to have them there again. And then we won national awards at the American Bloom with the environmental criteria.
You got to wait, but you got to wait.
And special recognition to some of our residents while the judges were, the advisors, excuse me, they're not judges, they're advisors. I have joined recently, was elected to the America and Bloom Board of Directors, so I have one more activity to keep me busy. Avery again partnered up with Greater Riverdale Thrives for Hispanic Heritage Event in the park. It was pretty amazing and successful, beautiful performances, lots of vendors, and just a good time. Chief Bill created the Domestic Violence Awareness Mobile and had it decked out in that, and it is now posted around town. We decorated for Halloween. Junk or treat? More junk or treat? It was a really great event. We did Casino Night. We have Casino Night. Casino Night's coming up next Friday, so please mark your calendars. Come on down to the Rec Center for a meal and some lottery tickets and bingo and just having a good time. We gave away turkey baskets as always. The mayor and the Port Town celebrated several events. The mayor was fortunate enough to get to go to Angela Alsobrooks inauguration ball and then to the swearing in of our governor Wes Moore, so we were well represented and really happy.
I know you guys can't tell which one is me. I'm the very thin one.
We transformed Decatur Street. I probably got more comments about it. Something that we've done on, on this than anything that we've ever done in, in nine years, and that's how beautiful the Decatur Street became with the garland, with the park, with the tree, with the wrapped thing, so it was truly a holiday wonderland. We thanked our volunteers. We had a number of volunteers and they did a toy drive and raised all those toys up for us to give out to Adopt a Child.
Mr. Barnes, the volunteers, the volunteers, aren't we doing something different?
We are. Instead of having a separate event at the holiday time, we're recognizing our volunteers at Edmiston Day also, so that way we're trying to combine, consolidate, and then make it easier. Our caravan will go. We, we aren't having any caravans this year except for the caravan at Christmas. It seems to really work well. And in, hopefully people look forward to it. They all bore out. It's just a fun, fun night. Lighting the Christmas tree. We celebrated the holiday season with yard decorating. I love that reindeer. That's just so cute. And then we did Adopt a Child. We raised a record eight thousand two hundred dollars in donations for our children this year. We helped sixty-five children through a lot of things. I almost remember the year because that was my week of COVID, so but it looks like the mayor had a lot of fun, and I know Avery and everybody had fun wrapping presents. And then we had Shop with the Cop as we helped eight young people with the police officers spending the morning at Target shopping. That was part of the eight thousand two hundred dollars that we raised. And then the last event of the year was Santa arriving on the fire truck, so hopefully that gives you a sense of how busy we were for twenty twenty-two, and we don't anticipate that twenty twenty-three will be any different. And we have a great big thanks to all that made every one of these events a special and exciting activity. So in your books, I'm not going to
Just to go back before you move forward, so any comments from the council in reference to our activities? Do you think we do too much? Do you think we do just enough? This is what we need for our community? Any feedback on that?
I think we do. We do quite a lot, and I know the citizens appreciate it. I myself love it, and I want to go back to the Decatur Street at Christmas. A lot of people said it felt like they were back home. You know, no matter where they had lived before, they said they felt like this was home. It was, you know, a great feeling, so just to pass that on, that, that hit it right on the target.
That's good. I think that's what we want.
Yeah.
Okay.
This, um, this sideshow is on our Government Access Channel, so if you didn't see it in your book, or, or you want to just set in tune, or except for you, mayor, if you wanted to, your TVs to
I don't know why.
I don't understand why you can't get that channel, but anyway, it is on there.
It's one of the perks of not being, of being the mayor. Just don't get the access channel.
So anyway, good deal. And thank you, like I said, to everybody, to Avery. Many of these things don't happen unless she's leading the charge with those, and so I appreciate her extra effort and then each of you as you contribute and participate through the year. It's a, I, you know, somebody asked me recently about what Edmiston, why I like Edmiston. I said, well, I don't like Edmiston. I love Edmiston, and it's because it's a small-town community where people care for each other and we look after each other, and so, and that was a theme that came out when the American and Bloom advisors came. They, they put in our report and Karen told me personally, she said, I've never seen such a connection that you folks have with your, with your residents and how you take care of them and help them and do things for them, so you all are, that's a testament to all of yours dedication to that. Okay, so let's go to, real quick, and I'm not going to spend as much time on it. If I can get it open, that will be the, be the key.
Rod and Avery, I just want to say thank you for everything that you guys do. It really is incredible to get this review every year and see how much you do for our residents. And really, I think you know, everyone on the council and the mayor as well, myself excluded. I'm just really, really grateful for how much all of you do for the town.
Oh my goodness. I, I can't find my It's a labor of love, and so we, we, we certainly do enjoy it, so let me see. Okay, I think I figured it out, so I'm getting better. I'm getting better at this.
I think I, I'd like to say in reference to Mr. Turberville, the council mix and the personalities and the drive that you have for Edmiston makes it so much better for the staff and myself to do what we have to do. I think if we didn't have the clique that we have or the, whatever it is that we have, we wouldn't be able to do these things, and the staff would not want to. So thank you for what you do. Okay, we can move forward.
The Reader's Guide, I've told you this, I think this is my ninth time telling you this, so but The Reader's Guide is a really quick and handy guide that you can just pick up and go through and get all kinds of wonderful information about the budget in a really quick way. Our debt policy, our debt service schedule, our property tax rates and how they compare to other towns, what our assessed value has done over the past ten years, what's our, our taxes per, per home? Let's see if I can go, yeah, I can go down. So when you have a chance, this will be on the web. Also, it goes out so people can access it, but if you have a chance and you want to go through it, it's a really great source of information. It's an idea that I got many years ago and I've just kind of kept it up and it seems to be work, so if you saw, for instance, right there, if your home is valued at three hundred thousand dollars, you're going to pay one thousand four hundred and four dollars in taxes to the town. Last year, you paid one thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ten cents, so that's a quick way to show folks that their taxes, at least the portion on their tax bill that is coming to Edmiston, is not going up. And then here is the rates as they compare to all the other towns. And you see Edmiston's rate, we, we're, last year we're point four nine five seven. This year it's point four six something, but we're much lower than a lot of communities. Comer Manners is point eight seven six seven. Cottage Cities is point five one six six, so we're a little bit close to that. Leidensburg is point seven four, so much lower than some of our surrounding communities. And then you see our real estate and how much value it has gone up. In twenty fourteen, we had a hundred and thirty-three million dollars in valuation. Today, we have a hundred and ninety-four million, so the value of our properties has all gone up, and we all know that from our tax bills. Then there's just some data about all of this. I'll never forget the first, when I was interviewed and came and talked about this, we had a couple of council members that they didn't realize that the Hispanic population made up fifty-eight percent of the town's population. They really thought it was a different group that was the majority, so this is helpful to let people know. And then there's those great pictures of you folks and the mayor and one of her hairstyles. We should have really done for the crowning glory with such a great program, but we should have did a pictures of you and your different hairstyles. There's our bond, our debt policy. Here's our org chart, so you could quickly show somebody our staff and what their positions are. Here's the proposed salary for next year. It's a three and a half percent colon, not five percent. I said, I saw something I didn't get changed. And then the other great thing that I think is in here is your strategic plan goals, then our, our capital improvement list and the, how much we've made with that, our economic development study that we just did, the strategic plan, and then our vehicle. So it's a great, great document, and if you get a chance to look at further, you, I would encourage you to do so. Now, let's get to the budget. Those, those were the two quick things I wanted to share with you and make you aware of so that you knew. This year's budget is an interesting budget. Yes?
Can I ask you, I have a question. So you also mentioned the economic strategic plan that we've been working on with the county. Is there sort of a draft of what that document looks like that we might be able to reference as we go through this process?
Yes, it's in that guide. I just did.
That's the same thing? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's the plan. Right, and as we did that night when they, they were here doing the final presentation of that plan, many of those things you've already embarked on or started that they identified. Recently, the mayor just did a support letter to the city of Heightsville. They're applying for a Raze Grant, which is going to do a study of connectivity between Edmiston and Heightsville and several other communities, and so, and then the next, next fall, then they're actually going to and several other communities. And so, and then the next, next fall, then they're actually going to apply for grant dollars to do projects. So we are in the ground floor with them on that, and they are using Panoni Traffic Engineering, which is also the company that we're using. And, and I had a conversation with Brian today. They're a little bit behind because they went through a staff change, but they're anticipating by the end of the month bring, coming to you with some thoughts and suggestions on Forty Sixth Avenue. I did have a visit yesterday, day before, from, excuse me, Dr. Dallas, concerned about the noise that the industrial park is creating and the, and impacting the resident's sleep and, and livability, particularly the truck traffic. Lafayette, the tow trucks, the refrigeration trucks that are sitting in Riverdale Park. And so I'm going to have some conversations with John and Lucision with Riverdale Park and see what we can talk about there, but I told her the study was coming and I also told her that we would be discussing this. Mr. Johnson has his hand up.
I have what?
You have your hand up. Are you asking a question?
How you see my hand up?
I don't know. I just see a hand.
No, I didn't have a question at the moment.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Rod. I had, I have one more question. So this is, this is the third year. No, this is the sixth year I've done this. And I feel like I'm still a little unclear about sort of the point at which we make suggestions or recommendations for use of funds in the coming year's budget. So maybe we could get a little clarity around that so we could get started.
So the budget you presented tonight is the budget that the mayor, our ordinance calls for the mayor to present to you a proposed budget for FY twenty three twenty four, and that's what you have in your hot little hands. So as we go through it, the opportunity is there to ask questions, to make changes, to discuss, review, and do whatever you want to the, to that budget. You will adopt the budget, you know, in final form in May. So at your council meeting in May, so you, you have lots of time. This year, we have listening, we have a meeting again next Tuesday. We have a meeting the last week of the month, and then we have work session in April, and so we have a lot of, hi Elliot, how are you? And, and, and so.
He was responding, Ron. What'd you say?
Okay, how are you Elliot? Hi. Yeah. And so, yeah, anything that you want to add, you want to delete, you want to talk about, we're going to go line by line pretty much on most of this stuff. And an area where Mayor Gant and I would both love to have a lot to focus on is, of course, ARPA, and are we moving forward with the, with the town hall? And some of the other projects that we're going to talk about in that, and that's one we're going to talk a little bit tonight. And then hopefully keep talking about it as we go through each of our sessions, but. Sarah, ask questions anytime, add stuff, change stuff, delete stuff. If you think something's not right, then raise the flag and say, okay, we need to do something different here, because there's pretty good detail on, in the budget book on each line item in each department, so you can get a pretty good feel about that. For instance, I put in, and when we go over general government, I added five thousand dollars for the In Time Harvest Ministry folks that we discussed using ARPA funds and not using ARPA funds and doing it just through our general budget. So I researched that. That's what Comer Manor gave them, and that's what, well, I don't think they got anything from Cottage City, but they got some money from Leidensburg too that was a small amount, so. So that was a great solution that you all talked about and discussed and came up with when you, when you looked at that item. There is a three and a half percent COLA in this budget that, for the employees, and so that, we've been doing those every year on July first for the last nine years. And then there's a one and a half percent, you can get up to one and a half percent merit pay if you excel in your position. That's built into the budget. Chief Beal, we'll talk to you about some items that we are going to discuss, and let's just go right now to, if I can get there. Let's see, I can't remember how to do this.
Can I ask a quick question, Rod? Sorry. As I was looking at the, there's the org chart and then there's the salaries and there's the current salary and there's a five percent cost of living.
Yeah, that, I, I'd originally started at five and, and I dropped it back to three and a half, and I just didn't get that changed at the top of that chart.
I see. Okay. Because I wasn't sure if that was like.
Yeah.
We're like picking one or the other. And then I just noticed also, and this is just probably like a typo, but on page thirty, it looks like Anna Romero is still like her title looks like part-time code officer, not. And she's full-time now, is that correct?
Correct. Good catch, yeah. Yeah, good catch. I'll fix both of those things before it posts, so. Okay, so let's see if I can get. Okay, so now we're going to go back to sharing. We're going to click on this, on our budget book, and we're going to look at grants first, real quick. We, we continue to be extremely active with our grants program. As you can see, we, we have, right now I'm managing one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine grants going along, and that doesn't count our ARPA program that we're doing with stormwater management. So Avery and I are doing that one together, and then she's also got some grants that she works on, on the side too, that aren't listed on here because we haven't applied this year yet for those, but all of these will pretty much come to fruition this year. To give you up to date, safe routes to schools, we met with the county on Monday. They have preliminarily, we're waiting for the written document, approved our stormwater management permit, and so we're able to go forward with the sidewalks. And so now it's back, it'll go back on Monday to the state highway for the final review, one hundred percent. And then it'll be ready to go out for bid in April and May. So we're very, very excited that we finally, finally have gotten to that point. The county was really agreeable with us on Monday. We couldn't say enough good things. They, Mike, Claire suggested that we do several different avenues. They, they wanted us, the flood plain was a big issue. He solved all those kinds of things, so good. We've, we have partnered with Nature Forward on Hamilton, on Gallatin Street. So the rain gardens are going in there in the next couple of weeks, and then on April fifteenth, volunteers will be planting all of those rain gardens through Nature Forward. They are an organization that is working with our Hispanic community to make that happen. Our sidewalks, CDBG sidewalks, our pre-construction meeting is on Monday, and so they will go under construction and have to be finished by May first. Our Edmiston Beautiful Grants are, are moving along. We have three applicants right now. And then our Edmiston facade, we're working on some of that. And then the mayor was successful in getting us a bond bill through Delegate, well, now Senator Washington on streetlights on Forty Seventh Avenue, so that design plan is being completed. I'm submitting the paperwork to the state for the bond bill hearing on April, and so that project is moving forward. And then all I need on the walking trail is one more quote, and I should have that in soon, and then with that, that one will go too. So just to give you some idea, we have one million, one hundred and thirty seven thousand, five hundred and twenty eight dollars worth of grants programmed in this year's budget that we will anticipate getting done, and this doesn't count the new ones that will apply for. Chief Beal is actively applying for grants right and left. He's just doing an amazing job. And there happens to be right now a number of grants coming down the pike for the police department, so very, very excited about that. We did get one that I don't have on here that I should have added. We just got, we got a grant over on Lafayette to put in flashing red light stop line, solar powered stoplights on Lafayette and bike delineator poles down the bike lane, so. That grant will. Any questions about grants? Okay, so this look at tonight, let's look at the first time we'll look, and then we'll look at this over and over and over as we go through the budget process, as, and as you try to make some changes. This is the ARPA, ARPA funds, and so to date, we've spent two hundred and forty one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars of our one point four million dollars, and we have one point two four six left. And so I kind of just outlined where some of those uses for that can go. And while our flood mitigation stormwater grant program is off and running, so far it's not getting a lot of attention. I haven't, I've only reserved two hundred and twenty five thousand versus the three hundred thousand dollars, but we can always change that if we need to. The traffic study has that amount left on it. Chief Beal has proposed to replace another police cruiser in the next year's budget, so I put that under ARPA. He'd like to get a message board trailer where he can set up for traffic enforcement and for event activity. It's on wheels, it's solar, so he's got that in. And then he's also proposed a community events trailer that, that trailer would then have, it's enclosed, it would be include barricades, tables, chairs, everything we need to show up and do a quick event, whether it's a pop-up or whether it's in the park or whether it's on a street emergency, whatever it might be. That trailer would be ready to go and roll and have all of the equipment and items necessary to stage that activity. And then we have two sidewalk projects that I really think are important, and so I pulled money from town hall renovation because we did also apply for a bond bill this year with Senator Washington for money for town hall renovation. And so if we're successful with that, then we don't need the full eight hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars for town hall renovation estimate. And we can do our two sidewalk projects on Gallatin and Hamilton, and this is all open for discussion. This is the part, Sarah, particularly where you guys can tear apart and fix the upper, the upper part of your screen, the, those are things you've already approved and spent, but the bottom part, you can manipulate change, move around and do whatever you want with it.
Rod, is this in our binder?
Yes, it's under American Recovery Act Fund. It's a tab clear to the back, almost. It's the very last tab.
Gold color?
Well, there, I didn't keep them color coordinated, so they're different in everyone's.
It's the last group of.
It's the very last one, so.
Rod, did we just, I know we talked about getting a new pickup truck that was going to be four-wheel drive, open bed for Public Works.
No, we got a pickup truck.
Right. So we did get that new truck for the Public Works?
Yes, although we don't allow Public Works to really use it much. We've used it primarily for events and activities in the mayor. We keep it looking pretty spectacular. It'll, it will eventually go in to replace one of the Public Works trucks, but for right now, we're keeping it, keeping it pretty well-conditioned.
And so do we need a, an event trailer on top of that to haul things around town?
The, the key thing with the event trailer is everything is, we have to gather up whenever we're going to have, if, if Chief has an emergency that comes up and we got to take barricades over, we got to go find him out in the storeroom, dig him out, put him in something. What he's proposing is this trailer will be that equipped, so that all he has to do is hook onto it, pull it over to that site, set up the barricades, roll out the tape, do if he needs table and chairs, it'll be in the trailer, all the supplies that he needs. And then from an event standpoint with us, where we have to go down to the rec center all the time and set up and do, and then to Veterans Park, all we have to do is pull up the trailer, the tables and chairs are right in the back. Where now we have to throw them in the back of a pickup truck, find somebody to help us haul them around and do, where this will make it really, really convenient plus efficient for storing, because our storage is tight anyway, but for that, so that's why he's proposing that.
Are we getting more storage? Because I thought we talked about that from, like, when we got the garlands, that there wasn't, they wouldn't fit any place without getting kind of crushed, and so we're getting a new.
We have a new shed.
Shed.
Yes, yes. And the shed is filling up with all of our Christmas decorations and all of our other stuff, so that we have more room for supplies and equipment in the little shed. So, yeah. We, we, I mean, no, it's, I guess it's a question of, is it something we can do without, probably? Is it something that would be really efficient and help us do our job better? Absolutely. So it, you know, it's whatever you folks determine is a priority.
Did the shed that we're building, is that also coming out of ARPA funds?
No, no.
How much was the shed?
Nine thousand five hundred. It just came out of our operating budget.
It's a rather large shed.
It is, a very large shed, ten by fifteen.
Storage is an issue for us. We are growing and gathering more important things and we're becoming more efficient, but we don't have the storage space. So I know that the trailer will be convenient. It'll be storage, and we're also talking about, you know, going out to our residents, meaning pop-up cookouts or pop-up police, not stings, but police opportunities to meet and greet with the residents.
Neighborhood block, neighborhood.
Yeah, the neighborhood block, yeah, block parties. These will, it will help us. I mean, we can just hook everything up, put everything in the trailer and go ahead to Gallatin or go ahead to Fifty Second or Fifty First, it doesn't matter. So it'll be very convenient, and especially when we set up for Edmiston Day, Doggy Park Day, you know, we take that, the, the gym, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth with supplies. So this would be really, really good.
We even. We have the new pickup truck. I'm just, like, I don't want to, like, belabor it, but we just got a brand-new pickup truck that presumably you could do one trip rather than five trips in the gym. And I, and are we getting a new gym that can seat four people?
Okay, if you've ever been to one of the setup events, while everything's being set up.
Chairs.
There's so many, there's numerous trips with both of our pickup trucks with chairs, with tables.
Tents.
Tents. I tell you what, would take about four hours of loading, unloading, and it's literally four hours. You probably can have the trailer, it's nine percent of the time, it's already going to be set with everything in there. One trip down with that trailer, we unload, we'll probably still have to make a trip with both the pickup trucks. It's a time saver and it's a place to keep everything in one place.
Do we have, I guess I'm just, are we trying to spend money? Like, are we, do we have to spend this and we're looking for?
I think we're trying to improve our work, you know, how we work efficiently and how quick we can move things. I don't think we're just trying to blow money out the door. I think we're putting money in the right place for things that are going to help us. I think we're putting money in the right place for things that are gonna help us as a town, you know, be more efficient.
We do have to spend the ARPA funds or we lose them too. But um, I mean, for me, I don't feel like I'm well positioned to have like, an educated, for me, having like a educated conversation about this cause I'm just sort of just getting myself familiar with this document. Um. But I've, I, I do wonder if there might be some like bigger picture things that we might want to dedicate the ARPA funds to um, that could have a long term like revenue generation for the town. Um, and so that's one thing I just, I wanna put out there for us to think about over the next week or so is what could something like that look like? I mean, I've, I always think that, I think about our rec center, for example, right? And that we do get some revenue for renting that out. Um, but what if we made it like a really nice rec center, right? That had like outdoor space that had, you know, some, some windows, something that was just that, you know, that's a little bit more attractive and could bring in maybe more folks to do more things.
What if we, okay, I thought you were done, sorry.
No, no, I'm done, I'm done, go ahead, Betsy.
The problem with that Sarah is we don't own the rec building. At any time, Park and Planning can turn around and say, oh, it's ours now. We don't own that, that, that belongs to Park and Planning. And Rod, have they extended our contract yet?
No, they're still working on it.
Yeah, and I, I was talking to a gentleman down there that was, who works for Park and Planning. And there are things that Park and Planning promised many years ago, before we took over that building, that they were gonna do some upgrades. And it just, Park and Planning is slow doing things. But any money we put into that building, at any time Park and Planning can say, oh, we're closing it, it's over with. And one day, that's, we're lost. We, I, I'm not at all into putting any money.
I had no idea.
Yeah, into that building, cause we're, we'll never get it back.
Now, what we can do Sarah and Betsy is we can advocate to Park and Planning to do the things that you would like to see um, at the building improved. But the, one of the um, problems is the Park and Planning is moving away from the small community centers and moving to the mega centers where they're wanting to build, you know? And I think they have one planned over by PG Plaza, they have one planned up on Veterans Parkway. They, they have some big, big projects. But we, we certainly, I've gone to the hearings, I've testified to get money for the, for the rec center at the roof, finally get the roof replaced. Uh, we've spent, uh, I had to provide them with a list of all the improvements we've done to the building over the last um, ten years. And uh, we've spent almost fifty thousand dollars on maintenance and upkeep of uh, cleaning the building, putting a new floor, ceiling, walls, um, bathroom fixtures, uh, kitchen fixtures, tables and chairs, those kinds of things. So we have invested uh, heavily now, not to say we haven't gotten return. We get about thirty thousand dollars a year in rental revenue from the building. Um, so uh, we have got at least some of that covered.
Yeah.
From that standpoint.
And I'd rather see us put money into expanding town hall and have a nice place at town hall for some of the events that we have down at um, I'm sorry, at the rec building. Like when we have um, Las Vegas night, if we had a nice addition on to our building, town hall, to me, I'd rather have Las Vegas night in our town hall. The parking would, is better, well lit. Uh, so I'd rather see money go there than into the rec building. I know we need to put money into the rec building, keep up the upkeep and keep it looking nice, but I'm not for putting in windows or, you know.
No, I withdraw the suggestion. I, I, this is, I didn't know that, I didn't know any of that. I thought that we could, I knew that like parks and rec, like on the land, I thought that there was like a weird situation with the rec center though.
Yeah.
Uh, so. Yeah.
So, yeah, so I introduced this to you tonight so they give you, start to thinking. You, you know, you had many, many meetings about ARPA. These are the things that you talked about in the ARPA, this, the survey that came out. Town Hall renovation was one of those. You wanted to be able to help folks with the flood mitigation stormwater grants. That was one of the um, came out of the survey. And so you, you have really used the funds for the purposes that um, you've thought you wanted to in the, from the beginning. And no, but I resent a little bit, uh, Hillary, your comment about that the towns, uh, that the staff's just trying to look at spending money. No, we're not just trying to spend money. We don't spend um, capital dollars at the town hardly ever. We, we rarely go uh, out and buy equipment. And so it's, it's a big deal when we, when we do. And, and this, this happens to just be one of those times when it's a really good deal. And, and Chief and I both are trying to find grants to cover both the message board trailer and that community events trailer. But so far, uh, we just haven't been successful at doing that.
And I didn't mean it in a pejorative way. I mean, I, I do understand that some of these ARPA funds are time limited and we do have to spend them or we, you know, don't get to. And so it's not in a like, who proved it? But just, are we trying to, are we trying to come up with ways to spend this money? Or are we, I don't know, like, and not in a bad way. Like, we do need to come up with ways to spend this money. I just, I thought, I was just thinking like, we talked about adding more storage, we got the new truck, we have the new gym that people can drive around with passengers. And I, and not that I don't think we need better storage because I've done plenty of events and loading things in and out of our current storage is not easy. But are, are, do we need to just sort of think about like, do we really need to just refurbish our storage? And maybe it's a different investment than adding piecemeal or adding.
Right.
A tow, a tow behind trailer. Like, if we just need more storage, we should get more storage. And then if it's just easier to load things in and out, cause things are not piled on top of each other, maybe that creates some of that efficiency. And, and I just, you know, I'm not a po, I mean, I've done plenty of events setup and breakdown and I know it's no bueno back there in the storage. But just is adding a trailer, is that really a solution? Or I, I don't know, just to make sure that we're.
To me, adding.
Not just piecemeal adding things, but we're really solving problems, I guess, is sort of.
Adding a trailer, that trailer will be loaded up, it can be loaded up a week before an event is gonna happen. So we can take our time making sure it's loaded, everything is in there, and same with unloading it. And you know, after event, everybody's tired, you're taking stuff back and forth, back and forth. If you could have put everything in the trailer and bring it back to town hall, some of the stuff will stay on the trailer, some will come off cause you can then set it up for the next event, then we know that's going on. Uh, to me, a, a trailer is, I think, a great idea, I like that.
All good discussion and that's what I'm hoping for. But I, I also wanna remind you that you had many, many meetings talking about the ARPA funds and what you wanted to do with them. And so we're trying to follow that direction and that's so far is what you have in front of you. Um, that plan with the exception of that trailer and um, that message board and the sidewalks. Those are additions that I put on there that have come up during this year after you had your mini meetings about ARPA funds. And so um, those, those are just uh, suggestions and ideas. So as Sarah said, you just got this today. So um, you've got plenty of time to look at and review and make thoughts and comments and questions and appreciate all of the feedback because it's, you know, it's really important.
I think the message board is also, we had talked about that when we were redoing the, the other two boards that a message board that would be set up in different parts of the town would be great. I mean, today we could have used it, uh, I think Sarah, you all, you all got a little, uh, your WSSC came, paid y'all a visit with the water main break? I mean, it would've been nice to be able to put a sign saying water main break and let everybody know that, that, not to even try to go down that street.
Yeah, it was actually a little more bizarre than a water main break, but I won't derail this conversation.
I'm just saying a water main break, cause I know it was a lot going on over there. But it, to me, the message board to me would be an awesome thing that we can take different parts of the town to let people know what's going on.
Um, the community events trailer, that would have like Edmiston's logo on it, right? Like, it would be a town of Edmiston vehicle.
Absolutely. Correct. He, uh, chief wants to deck it out with um, you know, with uh, graphics for the police and town both together um, on it.
Yeah, I'm less excited about that. I feel like if it's a community events trailer, it needs to be the town of Edmiston, but.
Yeah, he, he's definitely not opposed to that at all, Sarah. That, that was his on the list uh, to do. But I think he was also gonna put the police emblem and um, other police on it too. And you know, he could bring you whatever um, proposed look of it for you all to agree upon before it's ever put on it.
Yeah.
And are there like ongoing, not that it would be very much, I understand, but just are there ongoing expenses for like titling and registering for a license plate and insurance and things like that? Cause it would be like on a V, like it's a motor, it's a vehicle on the road, right? Like, it would have to have all that.
You'd have to have tags on it.
Tags and stuffs.
And we, we definitely insure it.
We pay a one-time fee for the tag and that's it, um, as a local government. And then uh, the insurance is um, you know, minimal um, through the, the, through our program. But uh, yeah, those are both costs that would be associated with both trailers.
My initial react, you know, I love the idea of more sidewalks, I'm all about more sidewalks. Sidewalks everywhere, sidewalks for everyone. Um, I do wonder if we might want to think about using some of these funds though for some of the like beautification, for lack of a better word, in the Tanglewood slash Buchanan area. Um. Spaces that just look, that just look truly horrendous and are in need of some kind of like uniform facade revamp.
Yeah, that's, that's an area we, we really talked a lot about. We did apply for a, a rain garden grant for over there. So uh, we would be looking at putting in some rain gardens that would help along, at least on the side where that big vacant lot is. Um, and then on a street by the um, Caliber Collisions. We have two vendors over there that are gonna redo their fences and um, and do some murals on those fences. And those are Alley Cat and um, um, ATC, um, towing. They both can apply for our facade renovation grant money. Um, the same way with any of the, the businesses along there can apply for that. Uh, you know, Community Forklift had a big grant to transform that area around the curb into a park. And but.
They gave the money back.
They, they did because the um, bureaucratic um, organizations that were involved, they could never get through those hoops. And so um, that's all Park and Planning land there, once you make the curve. And um, so we can, we can certainly get after them to try to do some things. But I, I don't disagree with you Sarah at all. Um, and that's, if you recall, that's one of the things the economic development.
Yeah.
Uh, study um, talks about how we can improve the looks of our industrial parks. So we've been trying incrementally with the planters and with uh, the rain gardens and with uh, some of that. But um, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, like you've made absolutely as much progress as you can, right?
Yeah.
We kind of get to a place where, I mean, I'm also thinking about, and these are just ideas I'm throwing out there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Budget decision, but like, back on, like talking about Forty Sixth Avenue and what we had, you know, when we had that um, group come in who was going to turn one of the warehouse spaces into like Edmiston.
The, Edmiston Collective, yeah.
Yeah, and the problem we ran into was like parking, right? That like we couldn't, so I wonder if, if we wanna think about using any of these ARPA funds to purchase any property from anyone over there. So then that way we can like, if we could start to like slowly, like it becomes property that the town owns rather than us having to depend on these private landowners to make better decisions than we would be able to over time, have the space that then we would lease out as the town to something like the Edmiston Collective.
Um, I'm not sure if anybody's saying anything. Um, I think we run into zoning as well. And I'm not sure how, um, at first I was all for purchasing um, buildings or some of the um, um, blight as far as our homes. But um, I understand that it is not the best thing for a municipality to purchase. I would have to look into that a little further, but just recently um, based on um, couple of communities and one in particular, um, C Pleasant. Um, I've found that it's not necessarily the best thing to do. Um, and as far as our funds, this is the time to say it, this is the time to suggest. Um, but we have some, I think um, uh, Ms. McCully mentioned that the um, town hall. We have some major projects that would possibly take up the majority of our funds. And I believe Ms. Turnbull, you mentioned about the rec center. But why couldn't we shift that idea to the town hall? I'm not sure why there's a um, um, question as to whether we should expand the town hall or not. Um, but I think that's very important and I think that that would take up the majority of our funding. Um, as far as the facades, what happens is, um, the great thing is grant writing. Uh, Mr. Barnes and Ms. Avery and now the chief are doing a fantastic idea, a fantastic job um, requesting uh, grants and we're getting them. So I think that um, putting our ARPA funds in that, our grant funds in that, you know, we could use them in other places, I believe. So you're on to something, but I think that maybe we could look at the bigger um, picture or the bigger um, area of funding.
No, I, I hear you mayor. Um, I was just looking at like what we've talked about in our strategic plan. And I don't think expansion of the town hall was in that. But um, you know, if the town hall can be expanded and it can be like an actual like community center, um, then, yeah, I mean, I, I, I could possibly be, be supportive of that. I um, I just, you know, I've been on the council for six years, we've been talking about some places for a while and there, I, you know, we're not making any progress, right? And I'm not, this isn't like casting aspersions or blame, I'm just, I'm like, here we are, we're talking about a lot of money. And what could we do to spend some of that money to try to rein in an area that is deeply problematic for our residents, which is the industrial area over there by, by Forty Sixth and um, Lafayette? And the blight that, or the eyesore that is.
I'd love to transform that area totally, like transform it to where we could have a, a brewery or, or um, a gym, a, a chain and um, you know, some type of retail, restaurants, you know, with three levels or something, I don't know. I would love to transform that. Um, I think we only have one area back there though, that is mixed use, right? It's closer to the Heightsville. It's closer to the Heightsville line where we could do something.
Well, it's the largest area. It's, uh, Mr., uh, Martin's big warehouse area on the, on the, um, north side of, uh, 46th Avenue.
Is that, oh, 46th.
I was going to tell, say something about Buchanan Street. Oh, yes, we got the survey line, uh, survey completed. The lines over on Buchanan for what is the right of way is, uh, we can now paint them. And that, um, potentially changes the, how people park all down along Buchanan. And, but, uh, the chief is meeting individually with each owner and of course he's getting pushed back in a big way from, from those owners. And so when, when we draw the line, when we put the yellow line down, down the street and down, uh, 51st, you guys are the ones that are gonna hear from the businesses that were trying to drive them out of town. Um, and so then you have to balance, is it worth that battle or is it? Which one do you want here? And it, it's a tough one.
I, I want the lines put out there because I would rather lose a business that is too big for the building they're in. Then they continue with the trash they're throwing out, blocking the streets. And I, you know, the police department does a great job, you know, keeping Buchanan open, but they can't be there 24/7.
Yeah.
And they've, a lot of these businesses. A lot of these businesses, when they moved into there, they already were over capacity. They went in there because the rent is fairly cheap. So I would rather get a good business in there, get a good neighbor, than to keep putting up with the, the shenanigans that these guys are doing over there now. And at one time Buchanan Street, when I was running over there, we never had any of these problems. We were all good. The, we took pride. There was a lot of planters that were put out, you know, on the sidewalk. It's, it's, it's a crap hole.
Hmm.
So I, I'm ready to get it cleaned up and make them abide by the law. We have to abide by the law. Why don't they? And I know we'll hear a lot about it. And when I walk down there, I know I'll hear a lot. And, but we gotta do what's right and the right thing is put the lines down and make them behave themselves. They borrowed on themselves. They've been warned.
Um, I totally agree with everything Betsy just said. Um, I wonder Rod, I know this is like gonna take a little bit of work, but I wonder if you might be able to create a picture for us of how our revenue would be different if we didn't have the personal property tax payments from those businesses along that strip of Buchanan.
In that, Sarah, I can tell you right now, I know a couple of buildings where there's three businesses in one building. So we're not getting the revenue that we should be getting.
So that's, so that's what I'm thinking too, right? Is that like, it's not only, maybe it won't be that big of a loss for us, A. And B, yeah.
Yeah, I think we will get in better businesses because a lot of businesses left there because they couldn't deal with all the shenanigans going on. Um, and as I say, I know several businesses because I know the owner of one of them, because he is one of my customers. And I told him songs, he's over there. I'm not dealing with them.
Yeah, I'll get to those, I'll get to those numbers. It won't be big numbers, at least not on the north side of the street. The, you know, the bigger numbers come from the, from the south side.
I think also.
Because most of those businesses don't have big inventories or lots of personal property, um, you know, that they report to the state, so.
Do we know what, um, is it, is it WSSC or is it the Washington Gas that's, I'm sorry, that's coming in?
Washington Gas.
Do we know what they're gonna do in that location? Is it gonna be like fleet services or are they gonna have offices with any? Any idea? Because I, I'm just, I'm curious what their land use for, you know, I don't know what else to call it. I, I wonder what that will look like and what that would do to either attract or repel businesses, you know?
We, um, I can reach out to Washington Gas and see what their thoughts are. They own, you know, part of the reason they probably bought that lot, uh, is because they own all the, all of, uh, the 12 acres that surrounds Community Forklift plus, uh, Forklift's building. So they, they created a fairly large footprint. Now, most of the land is contaminated and they're gonna have to deal with a lot of cleanup issues if they do any great big building projects on it. But, um, we can find out. I don't know. We haven't, the mayor and I neither one have heard anything from Forklift in terms of whether they're still, gas is still trying to push them out or if they're looking for a lease or if they're able to stay there. So, uh, that's probably a good question to try to chase down and find out, um, if we can get some answers about. Cause that is a big, a big footprint in town, very big footprint in town.
I want to go back to Lafayette area, the industrial area over there. Um, one of the things we also need to think about, if we, um, drive out those, um, small businesses, few businesses, whatever it is, we could, um, another bad business, and I don't want to say bad business, but another business that we don't necessarily want in that area could come in because there is no real restriction. So I think we need to, to, um, think about how we can designate that area. Whereas more auto body shops are not coming there or, or any type of shop that would possibly pollute the air in a certain way, though designated as a green area. We talked about it before. Um, how we go about doing that. So we can say it won't be necessarily zoning, but it is zoning. Um, just designated as a green area or what, what do we have to do for green space or, or environmentally, uh, whatever zone?
Yeah.
So that those businesses can't come in because everyone else can be grandfathered. But, um, there's a requirement for those coming in, so we don't allow the same type of business to come into those spaces.
Didn't we, I'm sorry, Hillary, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I, I didn't have the bandwidth at the time and it was right as we were transitioning with the, um, Chief Gibson heading out. I, I think when we had those initial kind of conversations with D-PY about like blighted commercial or blight, you know, and I, uh, the blighted a commercial zone and they had some interest, it seemed in the, in our area in particular, in their larger kind of addressing these, you know, blighted businesses or, or blighted. I can't remember what the exact term was, but blighted businesses or blighted industries. Um, but, you know, we were gonna meet with them and I think they came out and spoke with the chief, but then that was really, you know, a month or two after that. And it was when he transitioned out. So I don't know that we got anything concrete from them on what can we ask them to do when it comes to licensing new businesses and what should they be? You know, should they be looking at numbers of parking spaces more diligently and are there, is that considered a blighted commercial area? Maybe that was like commercial areas. And is there something that they have that we could be tapping into or that the businesses there could be tapping into? I just, I, I feel like that seemed like, oh, this is good timing. They're talking about the same thing that we're concerned about. They know about our strip there. Um, off Tanglewood Buchanan. And then it just was a, you know, an awkward time for us and I don't think we, I didn't follow through. That's for sure. I was in the hall, I think with them.
I do know they said that us also having to give a permit, you know, business license. Each building, whether it's on Buchanan or whether it's over in the other industrial area, 46th, every, all of them have designated how many parking spaces they have to have. Before we give the blessing of a business license, they have to come into us and they have to say, this is how many people we're gonna have there. This is how much parking we need. And we can look on our thing saying, well, you don't have, you got 20 employees and three parking spaces? We can't gr- grant you a business license because you don't have the parking for them.
I thought we enforced that on the table.
No, we can't. He, it, the gentleman said that we need to kind of hitch up our pants and he didn't say that, but he said, we need, before we give it business license, because we pretty much, they come in, they fill out the form and they get their business license. We need to start taking steps saying, well, what kind of business? You know, what are your hours? We're not gonna allow business operations after a certain time. And we talked about not letting business, you know, working at two, three in the morning. You know, for, I mean, we can't stop a tow company from not bringing in a car that they impound or something like that. But we can stop some of the businesses that are putting new, um, speakers in a car that they can't do it at midnight and then turn the music up to make sure they're loud enough. So we gotta do some changes ourself on, you know, our end for business license.
I do know, uh, we've had conversations with our attorney and so it'd be good to have a conversation with Jason, um, about what we can and can't do. The UNO, you know, we, we do require to have a copy of the UNO. We do have an application with the, uh, owners' names and hours of operation and that kind of thing that Betsy, you were talking about. Um, and it does, the UNO does say the parking. That's the area where we haven't tried to tie the business license to. And so that's a good question to see if we can, um, somehow tie the business license to the number of spaces and, and whether it's being enforced. Cause you know, D-PY is about enforcement. They're not so much about, um,
Permission.
Zoning and all of those kinds of things. That's a whole different avenue, but, um, they're certainly about enforcement. So like the, the, um, oil, the, um, you know, the contamination, the paint, the paint booths, the, the health and sanity, safety, um, things that are required. Um, all of those things they can, and the parking is, is a key, one of those. And I, I think Betsy's absolutely right. Um, we need to tie those business licenses somehow to those because we don't get the option to tell, uh, anyone before that business comes or before that UNO is issued, whether we want to have that business or not.
Yeah.
Um, you know, if we can regulate it based on parking, because there's just, they should not be there if they're gonna operate a business that needs 15 spaces for a car and they have three.
And I, I, I feel like it would be useful to have our town attorney analyze for us, what are the things that we as a town, like, like what are the ordinances that we can have that make it extremely onerous to run crappy businesses like that in the town? So that way, you know, this won't be an attractive place for businesses like that to come because our enforcement regime is just too rigorous and too stringent for them to be able to operate.
And I think, uh, meaning like Hillary said and Betsy said, talking to those guys, because in those, uh, ladies that come out from D-PY and, um, do those kinds of things, they can certainly help, you know?
Cause I think parking is one of them for sure, right? Like being really strict about that and what's possible. I like your idea, Betsy, too, about sort of hours of operation. Um, but I imagine that.
The runoff, like, you know, the mayor was saying, like what they do to the air and what Rod was saying, you know, what they're sort of doing, like what's running into the gutters and things like that's should be something we can.
But that we can, and paint booths, you have to get, there's a lot of painting going on on Buchanan Street. And there's some, I know going on back in the other industrial area, but it's not as bad. Paint booths, you have to have a paint booth to paint in the state of Maryland. And not one of those repair shops have a paint booth. And that should be an automatic, your business is shut down. Um, and I think hopefully the attorney can say, you know, it, it costs, no one's gonna pay to put a paint booth in because of the cost of it.
Well, and the standards they have to do, yeah, the, the standards they have to live by, yeah.
And I do know a lot of the, the businesses that moved in on the north side of Buchanan Street. Kelly Welding, I don't know who here knows a lot about them. They were customers or associates of Kelly Weld- Welding. And that's why they got in and nothing happened. Cause the gentleman that owned most of these buildings, he lived down in Florida. He had a connection to Kelly Welding and that's where the downfall was. Um, he's, he has since sold and I believe some of the buildings have sold to individuals, Rod, if I'm right. But another gentleman has bought the other remaining buildings. And from what I can tell, he's tried to work with you, hasn't he, Rod?
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, to me, we just gotta be hard on them. We've been nice too long. And now back to the budget.
These are good budget, no, these are all implications to the budget and obviously for the use of those funds. So good, good discussion. All right. Do you wanna leave ARPA and go to one more area and then be done for the evening?
That sounds good.
Does that sound good with everybody?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So let's jump over to revenues and just talk, um, kind of, um, I'm gonna go to the summary page because it's a little easier just to go down the list a little bit and then we can get into more detail a little bit later on, um, with, um, with that. Okay, so here's our revenues. And of course, you know, you all know that our main revenue source is real estate taxes. And so we generate about $907,000 in real estate taxes every year. Um, the things I want you to also kind of focus in on, Sarah asked about business personal property tax. You can see we do about 210,000, but they just passed an exemption. The first $25,000, uh, dollars is exempt now, uh, for small businesses particularly. So we're gonna lose a little bit probably there. I didn't raise it any because I know, um, I just don't have a good feel that we're gonna increase that. And then I want you to look at like vehicle releases, fines and flagging, red light. Those are, those are three, uh, key, uh, police revenue generators and they're all on the, on the steady downhill side. And so, um, the good thing is on the red light, I, I'm hoping, um, and that number, I think I'm gonna have to go back and modify because you can see through, through, um, seven months, we had only collected on the red light, um, camera 39,000. We're projected to do 138,000, so I don't think we're gonna hit that. We need, I need to go back and, and adjust that. The fines and flagging, that's the parking tickets. We've coll- we'd collected 14,000, uh, we're projected to collect 24,000 against a 60. Uh, Chief Gibson got really aggressive and, and, uh, these numbers are his numbers that are in here for vehicle releases. Uh, parking tickets and fine, and the red light from, uh, last year when we were doing the budget. But, um, I, I kept resisting, but, um, he was certain we'd reached those. Well, we're not, we're obviously not going to. Part of that is a staffing issue and part of it is on the red light fines. I believe people know it's there and they either avoid it or they abide by the law, which is what we wanted anyway. But the speed camera, the revenue that Mike and Ultimate is, uh, telling us we're going to get from it is $20,000 a month potentially, and they believe that that's a major, um, majorly conservative number. Uh, that the number's gonna be higher, um, and that they believe that the collections, they're using about a 60% collection rate. They believe that number's gonna be a lot higher too. So anyway, I, I'd rather have the conservative approach. We put in $240,000. That's brand new revenue to the, to the budget you didn't have before. So, um, so that's a, a good thing. Um, our police state day. Um, our police state aid is going up significantly because it's based on the um, your expenditures from the prior year and we were fully staffed. So, so next year we get sixty thousand dollars versus thirty-three thousand, that's really terrific. Um, as you can see, cable TV doesn't change much, in fact, it keeps going down a little bit. State Highway, Mayor Gant, when she was at the league, she worked hard to get this uh, that revenue source back in the budget. They finally were successful with Governor Hogan and so we're growing in that area eighty-five thousand dollars. And then um, I wanted you to look at amusement tax. This just goes to show you, we've collected so far this year, we've collected fourteen thousand uh, five hundred and sixty-two dollars is which uh, is the budget I put for next year. But that's the highest number we've ever gotten in amusement tax. So John from D and D Tire that owns and runs it now, he's obviously doing a good job. And it's, it's um, generating a lot of, of money there. Um, the other key thing that we're seeing a huge increase in is interest income. We are partly because we have the ARPA funds, but also because our, our reserve fund of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is growing um, bigger as a result of the interest rates going back to a normal thing. So uh, even though I only had budgeted eighteen hundred dollars uh, cause we only took in twenty-three hundred last year. Um, next year I can do thirty-three thousand dollars, so that's a great increase situation. So those are our revenues, um, please take a look at those if you have questions or um, something screams at you that we could change or modify or go rob a bank or something, I don't know. We'd be happy to take a look at doing that. Um, but that's all I wanted to do tonight, I will present for tonight. I know um, great discussion, great, great feedback on the ARPA funds. So um, next week, uh, on Tuesday night, we will tackle um, more uh, the departments and the line items. And so please, between now and then, look through them, make notes, ask questions, ask to delete something, change things, something. Um, I did put a cell phone increase in for you guys again this, uh, in the next budget um, year, so um, other than that, I think I, I covered most of the increases and the changes in, in the budget. But you know, we're adding, uh, we're adding a couple of positions that we hadn't had before. The, the communication specialist and one of the police positions is an add-on. And so um, we, we're growing, growing. As the mayor says, we're growing. What is it you say, what is it you say there where the?
Small but mighty.
We're small but mighty, is that what it is? Yeah, I love that, I love that.
Does anyone have anything um, further in reference to the budget? Or would you like us to look at something in particular? And research and study for the next time?
I made quite a few notes, so I have-
It's terrible.
Um, I wondered if we might want to, in addition to Dumpster Day, think about doing a day that is electronics recycling?
Mm-hmm, we did that once, so, yep, I have a bunch of junk too. Not saying that you have a bunch of-
Yeah, no, I just, I, I think some of that stuff shows, shows up at Dumpster Day when actually like if we could recycle it, that'd be great. Or people put out their TVs to like be put in the trash and we shouldn't be doing that, so.
Um, did they take uh, television the last time? They did, we didn't have a great turnout for it, but maybe we can advertise differently. I think it also rained that day.
It did.
Yeah. Is there, is there any way we could do Dumpster Day and Electronics Day on the same day?
Yeah, that's what I was, thank you, Betsy, I was thinking that same thing.
Yeah. Cause I, I think, cause I think we might, that might work a little better.
Yep.
And then we could sort things into categories where we definitely have some way of it being hauled away. Like, cause there are some things that, you know, if we probably, if we had the wherewithal to transport things or someone would come pick it up, it would make sense to sort a little bit more at Dumpster Day. But it just sort of gets to the point where like, then we'll just have whatever, sitting in our parking lot for however long and yeah, but to, I think, cause early, like maybe with the first time that we did Dumpster Day, Rod, didn't we have like, we did some sorting, it seems like?
We did.
Paint was separate and things and-
We did paint, we still do paint. Um, the guys just uh, took some used paint away uh, yes, or last week. Um, and so we tried to do paint and we tried to do, um, we did electronics. Mr. Johnson did metal, um, few times, Mr. Johnson did metal. Um, which, yeah, that got controversial because people complained that he was making money off of it. But um, yeah, we can, we can set up Dumpster Day a little bit different. Try to advertise, um, Rick put in the, in the chat, Shred Day. We did, we have had the shred um, truck numerous times, actually, I think at least three. And we just get no participation. Um, it's a very costly truck to bring and um, the last time, the town was the biggest customer, we, we cleaned out the shed and shredded documents, but um, we can look at that too.
Okay, I had two more things I just wanted folks to marinate on. Um, I also wonder if we've, I feel like we've talked about this before, but maybe piloting like a compost program for compost pickup?
The great news with that is, we were awarded a grant with Eco City Farms and Compass Crew. And so in this year, um, thank you for, I forgot to put that on my, on the grant list. Um, we will be going door to door with the compost pickup program. And our guys will be picking, picking it up and the compost will be going to Eco City Farms for their new farm down at Watkins Park. And so um, well, yeah, yeah, so that's, I'm glad I can answer that one.
Okay.
We're gonna do that with education.
There's a webinar coming up on that again, we just got in our email, another one of those um, like webinars on composting. I just saw that yesterday or today in the email.
We have to get the education out there. You know, I was talking to a friend of mine and um, they live in Upper Marlboro. And um, she said she has garbage in her freezer. I do that sometimes, I'll freeze so that I can, you know, take it to the trash can. But she had garbage in her freezer and she said, they want me to compost, but I'm not gonna do it. That's really nasty, it's like garbage. Why would I um, recycle garbage? So I think that's the reality of a lot of people, they just see it as garbage, you know? And um, so I think we need to explain, um, just like we did the Green Street, you know? Just like we did the um, Rain Gardens. You have to, to teach people so that they're able to respect it and contribute, just like we do with the recycling. We find that more people are recycling now. So, and understanding what's contaminated and what's not. I think uh, that's a thin line, seems like everything's contaminated. But um, yeah, so education.
Yeah. Um, and this last one isn't really, I don't know, maybe it's not like a budget item, but um, in my household, we are constantly talking about how Edmiston would be so ripe to be a place that has, where we could collect more amusement tax. Um, because we have spaces where, you know, a business that runs, say like, an indoor like trampoline park or like one of those like family, like indoor family amusement joints that right now you have to go out to Laurel or Bowie to go to. Like if we had one that was like this close to the District Cup Columbia, I think that that would be a huge draw. Um, and would be super attractive. Cause I can't tell you how many of like, I'm so sick of going to all these birthday parties at trampoline parks in Bowie and Laurel when I'm like, why don't we have, what are these in Edmiston? So just some food for thought.
Is that a business that you might wanna start, Miss Sarah's Trampoline Park?
Hell, no, you know, I'm not interested in that liability, but no, but I mean, there's lots of um, I don't know, I mean, do, do you all know what I'm talking about, like?
Yeah.
Some of you, yeah. Um, just given the space that we have and our proximity to DC, I think that we could end up with like, that it, it could be sort of a huge attraction, so just some food for thought. It's been on my mind, I didn't know an appropriate time to share it, so I'm sharing it now.
Trampoline park, writing it down.
We just need the right building and the right person to come in to start something like that.
Yeah, Mr. Martin would be, Mr. Martin's Warehouse, one of his big warehouse buildings would be a good one for that. And um, he, you know, he had, for a long time, they had over there, the Smithsonian had uh, one of those buildings. And then uh, also uh, one of the theater companies had his, one of his buildings and they had, they did theater production practicing in that, in that space. And so, yeah, so that's kind of the perfect space maybe for it. We need to just try to work on how we can attract somebody to get there. And then we got a parking issue, but uh, with his building, at least he has a courtyard with lots of parking stalls. Good, we do have a couple of items on the agenda for tomorrow night.
Okay.
If there's nothing else on the budget.
Thanks for listening to me, I appreciate it.
That's a great idea, yeah, like Skyzone or something, good. Great idea. Um, do you wanna move to the uh, agenda items?
Yeah, we just have two items on the agenda tomorrow night. Um, the approval of the election change that we needed uh, to get the clarification about registration and then uh, the peeling paint ordinance is back. I sent out to you, uh, Hillary, this afternoon late. Um, we're amending the section that's covered under there and I, I believe you were concerned about, and I, I can maybe call this up on the screen. Um, concerned about language that uh, we were doing it for health and sanitary reasons and that's why we do the whole property thing. And so the language is already there in the existing ordinance.
Yeah.
Um, and I wanted to make sure you were good with that.
Yeah, and I guess I, I knew that that was in the preamble, if you will. I think what I liked were some of the samples that you sent where directly in that section, there was that very clear association of, you know, paint to, you know, prevent water, whatever. I mean, to make it super clear, but it's fine, it, it's probably not worth changing at this point, fine.
Okay.
No, I knew it was in the preamble.
Yeah.
But it was just that direct association that I thought would be-
That's the only reason she didn't, yeah, she didn't repeat it was because it was already there. But I can, uh, I mean, it's not hard to change the wording, this is first, this is introduction. So um, we can add it into the specific area too. Not a problem. Using Chevrolet, I think, I think Chevrolet was the, the one you were-
Yeah, there was a Chevrolet and then also one of our kind of port towns neighbors, also one of them had just, and it's not like wordy, but just a real clear-
Okay, okay.
If it's easy, if it's easy.
Okay, I will, I will tweak it up for tomorrow. And have Jason look at it. Jason will be here tomorrow night, our new town attorney, so. Okay, Mayor, that was it, we only have those two items.
Wow, nothing else, huh? Okay, well, I don't wanna belabor anything, is, is everyone good? Yep. If that is the case, um, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for your time and attention, I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay, bye guys.
You all then, bye. Take care.